Start off with Metropolitan Planning Organization Five-Year Strategic Transit Development Plan Final Report.
It's a mouthful there.
I know.
You could have just said, "Jeremy, Mr. Mayor." Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I'll just really briefly. In October of last year, we contracted with, the MPO contracted with Moore &amp; Associates to do a transit strategic development plan for the transit system in Casper. This is required for our federal funding. We decided to do essentially like a five-year business plan, an examination of the system as it operates, like, you know, from head to toe, schedules, policies, fleet, the entire thing, and provide a marketing, a marketing plan for us to, 18-month marketing plan for us to increase ridership over the next couple of years. So, we've held, you know, a ton of stakeholder meetings, public input meetings. We broadcast on Channel 197 a public meeting with our recommendations. Two weeks ago, we put our final draft out for public comment that closes the 26th of this coming month. I'd better double-check that, but I think that's right.
It is.
Oh, perfect. Yeah. And then we'll be finally, so Jim Moore from Moore &amp; Associates is here to go over basically what we did, the 20 recommendations, and answer any questions you guys have. So, I'll let Mr. Moore go.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to come and visit with you and to share with you, as Jeremy indicated, an overview of our short-range transit plan and transit development plan. And my name is Jim. My colleague Allison has also been handling the marketing aspect of the project, is also here this evening. And so, we have a short PowerPoint, sorry, don't understand your way there. And we'll walk through some council, Mayor, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to come and visit with you this evening. So, we had basically three core objectives, and that was to assess the program, and in doing so, look at things such as ways of increasing ridership, ways of increasing fare revenue, expanding the traditional historic customer base, and always from our firm's approach and all we do are public transit organizations such as the city and the MPO, we always look for things that are practical, readily attainable, and cost-effective. We don't do theoretical studies. We do basically business management cookbooks that your staff can then take over the next 18 to 24 months, implement, and you can actually see quantifiable return on investment. So, some benefits, we're improving the operational performance, and what we mean there, talking about things like on-time performance, productivity, getting more people onboard the vehicles, increasing customer satisfaction so as to be able to retain customers, and hopefully to energize them as salespeople for increasing ridership, increasing fare revenue and ridership, which are the key metrics any transit service wants to, you know, provide more trips and have a greater fare recovery year to year, looking at some potential services into new areas from the, particularly from the communities, the non-riders perspective, and then lastly, increasing community support for the transit program. So, we went out, our staff came in, and over the course of four days, three weekdays and a week and a Saturday, they went out and rode all the routes, the six routes, every trip from the beginning of the service till the end of service in the evening. They were onboard, they were bilingual trained surveyors, and they spoke with your customers. And just to give you some insight here in terms of the fixed route, that's the bus versus the dollar ride service. Just a few things here. They ended up with 191 valid responses, which based on your average ridership turns out to be a 72% participation rate, which is extraordinary frankly for a survey of this type. And even that 72% is a little more meaningful when you talk about screening for adults. We didn't talk with anyone under the age of 16, so we probably hit more than 72% of your average riders. So, some of the things we came away from in terms of developing a profile, people are using it to travel back and forth to work, so these are not unemployed folks, these are people who are using it to go to work. They're riding very frequently, more so than on average for a program of this size. They're employed. One of the main reasons they ride is because they don't have access to their own vehicle, and they have a household income of less, no greater than $25,000. And so, when you talk about the frequency of their ridership, the fact that they don't have access to a personal vehicle, what their household income, really talks about a high level of transit dependency. The folks that are riding that service are using it on a, you know, almost a day-in, a day-out basis. But the thing I'd really like the council to take note of is that if you were to implement the preferred service improvement, whatever that happens to be, whether it's later hours or more frequent service, we asked, if the city did that, what would be the impact on your behavior? And 66% said they would ride more frequently even beyond that five or six days a week. They'd make more trips on a per-day basis, and more trips means more fare revenue. Slide, we also did a survey of dollar ride customers. We did that a little bit differently. We mailed out a survey, a bilingual survey, to 500 recent customers, and we ended up with a response there of about 30%, which when you consider the type of customers, a lot of times they're seniors, they're persons with disabilities, they may be frail, but we got about a 30, 32% return on that survey, which again is significant for a program of this size. How folks are using it, again, here in this case, using it to mostly travel to healthcare medical services by far and away the number-one reason. They're using it because they no longer drive or don't have access, no longer have access to a personal vehicle. They chiefly are driving, are traveling around Casper versus some of the other partner communities that are part of the MPO. They're 62 or older, and they're riding twice a week. In terms of the community, really focus on folks who have not used the service in the 12 months prior to that survey contact. What we did here is we sent out a postcard to 5,000 randomly selected households, and we got about 200 responses, not a particularly high sample given the 5,000, but again, we weren't saying, "We're taking way service," or we're going to increase, you know, not the traditional sort of buzz things that would cause people to respond, but even with those 200, the number-one barrier why people don't use the service is because they have access to a personal vehicle, and in many instances, they need to use that personal vehicle sometime during the course of their business day. But despite that, there was a 90, over 90% awareness of the transit service, and so even if they weren't using it, they had family members who might be using it, or maybe they have recommended to a friend or a neighbor to use it. They were open to using public transit if they had a change in their personal circumstances, which could be they no longer have access to a vehicle, maybe they don't longer have a license, they may have a change in their residence, they may have a change in their employment, and I think that really positively positions the program, that the fact that you would consider riding if there was a change in your circumstances. But even if you weren't riding, 73% said that they felt that the service is a positive or valuable community asset. Looking at motivators to get folks who starkly have not been riders to begin riding, again, change in personal circumstances, new or more destination, which frankly in this case is defined as service that's closer to my house, later operating hours. Right now, the service operates weekdays till about 6:30. If it operated till 8:00 or 9:00, we saw a significant increase in potential ridership there, and that's because a lot of the folks don't necessarily have nine-to-five or eight-to-five traditional jobs. They work in the service sector, they might work till 9 o'clock at night, they might work on Saturdays, but if we had later operating hours, even on a trial basis, we would gain some riders. And then the last thing is real-time bus tracking. That's predictive arrival. What time is that bus going to come to my stop so that I don't have to wait out there a disproportionate amount of time? I can go out to the stop 10 minutes before it's going to come, and I know that, oh, it's four minutes away. Again, another growth opportunity, 84% of nonhistoric, non-riders would consider using the service if their current means of transportation was no longer available. And I will tell you, from 30-plus years of doing public transit consulting throughout the West, that is a very high figure compared to other small to medium-sized communities. So, some operational recommendations, we broke the recommendations into operations, marketing, administrative, and capital. Extend the red route out to the East Mall, and in doing so, that would eliminate the need for transfers between the blue and red, it would make it a single-seat trip, which makes transit more attractive to a greater share of the community. To establish a bus stop out at the independent living center, because a lot of the clientele out at the center there are historically riders. And Liz and I have been working with the VA clinic over the last few months. As you may know, sure you're aware, clinic relocated. They moved from a location that was served by transit to one that was not served by transit, and of course, the question begins, why can't we have service? So, Liz and I have been working with the folks at the VA to come up with some cost-effective options, but not just options, council, that rely upon the public dime, but also getting the VA engaged to also bring some resources to the table in terms of expansion of service out there. Looking at designated Smiths as a time transfer location, which would particularly help folks who, it would eliminate the need to come all the way into town to make a transfer, then to go back out to access Smiths or Walmart, things of that nature, reducing the number of time points, which would improve on-time performance, because right now, what happens is the bus goes, and it stops, and it holds, and it stops, and it holds at each time point because there are 20 time points, there have been 20 time points on every line, which for the length of the routes that you have here is just excessive. Implementing service out to the airport on a trial basis, and also developing a trial program where you have some sort of partnership with either a local taxi company or a shuttle company, Uber or Lyft, and our firm has done that, helped our clients do that in many communities. That's particularly a good way of doing a cost-effective solution or trial on weeknight evenings or even on a Saturday, to be able to do that so you don't have to operate all six routes. Some marketing recommendations, redesigning the transit service information materials, the brochures, the posters, the website, et cetera. Frankly, we didn't get fired when we said this early on. We said, "Oh, these brochures need work." They need work because they were very difficult to understand, even if you're in the business. The route maps had no sense of scale. You didn't, you know, it just, it was just a lot of work, a lot of opportunity there for redoing those to be able to make them more easily understood by a broader portion of the community. Same thing goes with the website. I talked a bit already about the marketing plan, and again, we're a little bit different. When Allison and her team put together marketing plans, they put it together with quantifiable goals. You do this, you should realize this percentage ridership, this percentage fare box recovery. Not a, we don't do things that just raise awareness. We focus on converting awareness to patronage. Implementing an ongoing travel training program, particularly important with folks who have not used the service, in some cases getting, even maybe being able to shift some folks off of the dollar ride onto the fixed route program. Dollar ride is much, inherently much more expensive to provide on a ride basis than the fixed route, and then again, that real-time or predictive arrival. Administratively, looking at a broader or a more formal monthly pass program. I mean, historically, folks have had to ride the bus to go over to the transit office, to get off, to go inside, to buy the pass, then to come back out, wait for another bus. It's, you know, as I was telling one of our colleagues earlier today, Pam, how many of us would continue doing business at a bank if every time we wanted to do banking, we had to go physically into the bank and wait in line? And the same thing here is we've got to get the passes sold in more places, we've got to be able to make it available through the mail and online, and not require people to come down to us to service them. Developing a bus stop adoption or sponsorship program with local businesses, as we've done in many other communities, to enhance the bus stop, because in a lot of cases, I mean, that bus stop functions as the front door to the service. You know, if you have a shelter, or a bench, or some lighting, or some signage, it makes folks more prone to actually use the service. And the more developed your bus stops are, they're your great billboard for the program, for the service existing, for folks who have not heretofore been customers. And then establishing a social service advisory committee. That might come in and meet with your staff on a quarterly basis and provide some feedback from their clientele's perspective. Capital recommendations, installing MDTs or mobile display terminals, they're basically fancy word for iPads on all vehicles, which would certainly help with data collection, will also support onboard fare sales. Implementing that bus stop improvement plan on an incremental or phased basis, multi-years. Our customers, our clients typically approach that on a 10-year basis. They might identify, you know, five or 10 bus stops every year, make those improvements once grant funding or capital funding is available, and also upgrading dispatch software. One of the things that the pandemic showed us here is everything was centralized, out at the office, out at the transit office, and if someone, one of the staff had become infected, and that place had closed down, there was, we had no redundant system for doing any dispatching. So, we've already addressed that in terms of equipment and training, et cetera, so that we can now actually take dispatch off, you know, we can take it anywhere in the community and do it, and not suffer having the system close down.
Jim, I think we actually are about out of time.
We're out of time?
I think so, but if we want to jump into questions.
That'd be great. Okay.
Yeah.
Councilman Gamroth.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, it was Jim, correct?
Jim.
For the presentation, I appreciate it. I really enjoyed reading through this. I agreed with a lot of the recommendations, they made a lot of steps, a lot of senses, especially like the bus stop adoption. That's a great opportunity for local businesses to get some advertising, and it could double for, again, like you said, our transit program to get out important communications to people that are using. And I work in marketing communications, so to me, as Councilman Nell would say, that's a no-brainer for me. We should be doing a lot more of that kind of marketing and partnerships in the community. I am curious, 50% of those surveyed said they would like longer later hours, and 30% ride nearly every day. You noted in, I think at the end of the plan, there's a Q&amp;A that said you would recommend increasing overall ridership, that would create wide appeal. Any reason, if everyone wants the longer later hours, what reason, why hasn't it been done in the past, out of curiosity?
I couldn't tell you why it hasn't been done. What I can tell you, in my perspective, is that when you have a program that's being administered on a day-to-day basis by the client, the city, the county, whomever, the attitude and the, the sense of priorities is very different when you're contracting it out to an independent party. And perhaps that was, you know, one of the reasons.
Thank you. Let's see here. Yeah, I guess what, we didn't get to the full list of the 20 recommendations. I know that's probably in the plan, but I would ask, I didn't see like a prioritization when I looked through it. I could have overlooked that, but are there any of these recommendations that your team would consider so low-risk, high-reward that, I mean, we just, like, there's absolutely no reason why we shouldn't be moving, like, list of priorities, the things that ideally we would have, and then at the top of the list is just, yeah, should have been doing this 10 years ago type of stuff?
I appreciate it, that's a great question. Thank you, councilmember. We actually do have in the plan a phased approach. We've identified things that we recommend you do in the first six months, and then six to 12, 12 to 18 months, and then out years. The items that go out in the out years, in some cases, councilmember, it's because it's a capital project, so it would require time to get that capital online, but in terms of, I'll use the, I'll use the phrase and the term low-hanging fruit. Certainly, the rebranding is critical, because when we came on-site, we thought the brand looked very tired. Not only that, the vehicles were not, they didn't have a uniform appearance. This is things that your staff has already done.
Yeah.
They're already in process of getting the vehicles rebranded, and it adds some enthusiasm, some excitement, certainly, you know, it's something different, because the vehicles serve as a rolling billboard throughout the community. So, any of the marketing things, the marketing plan, the website, the materials, things of that nature, we recommend those be done in the first six months. Entering into a partnership, putting together a bus stop improvement partnership opportunity with the community, is another thing that we recommended early on. We took care of already with staff, the ability to dispatch off-site, which was very important. Also, being able to sell passes online and through the mail, we certainly think that should be moved towards the front of the line. And then some of the other capital things, again, I would suggest be moved towards, you know, later in the plan, simply because it does take time to line up funding. So, I hope I've answered your question.
You did, thank you. I apologize, I overlooked that.
That's fine.
That's page 120 for anyone else who's curious.
It's riveting reading, as I'm sure.
No, it was really interesting. I overlooked the phases though, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilman Nell.
Thank you. I find it interesting that we got a very lengthy email today from one of our constituents concerning the bus service, and I think you addressed some of their complaints, but, you know, in this, they're talking, I mean, they use a pretty strong word, verbiage, as far as the, it being inhumane, but the distance that's now from the stops, the fact that our original bus routes are completely offline from 2010, and so...
Well, councilmember, if you feel it would be appropriate, and if staff feels appropriate, I'd be happy to give a look at that email.
What I'd like to do is give permission from the mayor to forward it to you and let you look at it, so maybe some of that stuff could be addressed in this. I don't know if we could do that or not, but...
Somebody could do a free reformation, I can see what it says.
Sure, I think so, yeah. But I think, Mayor, I think it is important that, criticism is important, and we need to take criticism seriously, because, you know, it could either be actual, you know, some of the impediments or criticism that's some of it forward, but it could also be a case of just perception, just lack of awareness or understanding.
There's some pretty poignant scenarios.
And so, the city has made a commitment to providing a quality transit program out there. I think it really behooves us collectively to be able to review the input and to be able to respond. In some cases, we might have to say, you know, "You got us, that's true." In other cases, we might have to say, "I'm sorry, you're, you know, that's just not correct."
Can I have your email?
Sure. Would you get a card?
And I'll shoot it to you right now.
Thank you.
Yep.
Not a question, but just a comment. I did really enjoy, this document had a lot of historical perspective and gave a lot of context to some of the decisions that had been made in the past, so I would just encourage citizens that, you know, this is an issue they're passionate about, the transit system. This document is definitely worth a read-through, a lot of great information in there, so I appreciate everything that was in there.
Thank you for your kind words.
And again, some of the historical context that you guys provided, so thank you.
Councilwoman Agbretson.
So, because I'm always just thinking about marketing and things, it's a good thing I do. I feel like the bus stops is a great idea of probably just trying to promote that, get local businesses, but you have driving billboards that could also do the same thing.
Sure.
And so, is that going to be open to possibly advertising on the buses?
Your Honor, Councilwoman, we have done that in the past, that has, and we just haven't gotten to that point yet. We want to get the wraps done first, but that is something that we can look at.
Okay.
But you see some of them currently that have remnants of prior advertising.
That's a great way to offset costs.
Yes. On, either on the inside versus the outside, but we're all looking to it.
And if you don't mind, I mean, I think we also, not only we're looking at it as an opportunity for revenue generating, we're also looking for trades, you know, with the community for various things, but I think we felt that we wanted to kind of raise the bar on the service in terms of on-time performance, its image, et cetera, before we necessarily went out and tried to put together partnerships for advertising. But I think we're going to be there in the next six months, and I certainly appreciate your comment, because it is something that we're going to consider. I don't think it's going to necessarily be the pot at the end of the rainbow, but I think, you know, if we could raise, you know, $75,000 or $100,000 a year in advertising for local, for local businesses, I mean, that's, that's marketing money.
I would like to see, like, at your bus stops, maybe putting something together so it's cohesive throughout the town, so certain bench, if you want a bench, it costs this, or an enclosure, it's going to look like this, kind of a scenario so that people aren't doing random things.
A media kit would definitely be something.
Yes, thank you.
Great.
Okay, anybody else?
Well, Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to come and visit with you at council tonight. And I'd like to just say, in closing, Liz and her team, we started this project in October, and as I've told staff, we don't, our firm doesn't bid on everything. We're very, very selective on what we bid on, hence our award ratio is relatively high. And we look, when we first saw this opportunity become, come out on the street on an RFP, we really went after it because we felt that there's great potential here, and as I've said with Liz on a number of times, and I hope she takes, sincerely takes advantage of my comments, is that I think that in six to 12 months, there's an opportunity to take the Casper story to conferences, to articles in the trade about how you take a, you know, sort of a so-so performing service in a small to medium-sized community and raise the bar significantly on it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Carter on Porter-Meerhead engagement.
Mr. Mayor, we can, we can waive the conversation time for that in order to deal with them.
All right. Okay, before we begin this evening, I'd like to remind everyone to silence their cellphones at this time, and I now call the July 6, 2021 regular council meeting to order. The chair would entertain a motion to, by minute, action excuse the absence of Councilman Kathy and Councilmember Pollak.
I'll move.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Gamroth. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passed.
Council meetings are also televised and can be viewed on cable channel 192. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.